Go ahead and start.
We can go ahead and start. Let me get over here to record and there we go.
Okay, you're also just if you're aware, recording with video as well.
Oh, brother.
I'll chew with my mouth closed.
Best time to do this when he's giving his reports.
Yes. Okay. I guess we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Is there a roll call going around? I haven't started one. I just arrived myself.
Well, I didn't, I didn't start the sheet. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Okay. Well, we will start that here then. So.
I can do a roll call though. Member Larson.
Present?
Member Wharton.
Present.
Member Cazor.
Here.
There's always one in every sub. Member Wilson. And member Faidhart.
Well, good.
You do have a quorum with three members present, one absent. Mr. Turnbull is ex officio and is also absent.
Okay. Uh, next we'll move to approval of the agenda. If someone would make that motion.
Can I make the motion?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll stack it up.
All right. Uh, all in favor, Sally?
I oppose.
Next we'll move to citizen comments. I see a citizen. Do you have a comment?
No.
No? Okay.
He's actually on the edge.
He's on the edge. No, okay. We'll get to you then. So we'll pass citizen comments and we'll look to approval of the minutes. Uh, I've read the minutes.
Yes, I've read them and I'm.
Would you like to make the motion?
I believe that they'd be accepted into the record as written.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
I.
Passes. Uh, reports. Paul?
Good.
Okay.
Well, has everybody got a hard copy of the, uh, report here?
I do.
Fairly simple. What, um, just a quick update on the sewer project. It is, um, wrapping up. Slowly but surely, the, all the buildings are on sewer. Uh, the things is entertaining. As yours reported this morning, uh, to the city, uh, shovel power hadn't quite figured out exactly how to charge us for what we're using it for, but, uh, that's still, because we're not a hundred percent, because what we're waiting on is a file inspection so that they can close all the septic tanks and things of that nature. Tanks are closed in place, so they'll have holes poke in them and then they fill them full of dirt so they don't collapse and we don't have any issues with the things later. So that's, so they fall in place as are, as they are. There was quite a few leaks in the process of that, that were, some happened during the construction, some were found during the construction. So in turn, we had some larger than usual utility numbers that you'll see in some of our reporting that'll come up maybe later. So that, those of all, as far as we know, that have been found and fixed by either the contractor or public works, depending on what their issues were. The, um, we had this month, this past month, two different meetings with Aeronautics. Uh, Matt had to suffer through those with me as well. One we mentioned before, just briefly, because it happened right before our last meeting, uh, literally right before. And we had yet to been able to, from that meeting, what was determined was that they didn't think we were getting, asking for enough money. They wanted to give us one. Which is a great problem, except for the fact that, that also means going back before the city council if we do need it. We right now, uh, the opinion, we don't need it, but we still need to appease Aeronautics and go through the process to make sure that they are, they're pleased with our scope of services that they have. We will be getting something arranged. Uh, we were hoping, everybody's schedule seemed kind of squirrely, so we were waiting until after at least the, the Thanksgiving holiday to settle a little bit with, and try to get something into the month, the first part of, um, December with the Aeronautic staff in hopes to, to get all that, to make them happy to, to, so that we can go ahead and get that starting and not, that, that contract started and not delay it any further. Uh, but if staff says we want more, I could be coming back to you in December's meeting for an expansion in scope, because one of the things that we do have to touch on, which will hit on the agenda here in a minute anyway, during the airport layout plan update is, we're already going to be meeting with Aeronautics to have it. We have to do an expansion on the, uh, timeline of the AOP contract. So you guys will be voting on that anyway. So if there's another thing that we need to go before Aeronautics about as far as, or the council, then we can do that at the same time. The, um, actually it looks like we're probably going to end up having, uh, we'll end up having probably two things go before the next, the next council meeting, not the one this time. That's no better than trying to squeeze out of you. But, um, the other, yeah, the other meeting that we have, uh, we had was in reference to the airport layout plan. I won't touch on that too much just because we got that on the agenda. So for a couple of items that we need to discuss and go over and review. Uh, that's also another reason why, since there was a chair available, I asked Matt to sit at the table because he can help point things to. And as, as mentioned, some of these things that we brought up during our meeting, there could be some small environmental studies that, um, will be some things that we have to negotiate through with either NTSU and/or with, um, us and going before the council, which is not something that was in our, um, CIP or anything. So that might be something that would be extra that we have to go before council with something that could require an amendment of some kind. We're just, we're still trying to feel like, feel that out because they've thrown some things out of some appraisals and there's.
Thank you.
Some of those things like that that are still outstanding. So we'll see how all that, all that comes about during this process. Following down through, you can see some of the, you see the fuel flow numbers and the revenue associated with that. Difference from last month. I can't take the reason, I mean, from September to October. It gave you a good idea on that, but, uh, you can see that, you know, you're looking from time to, from year to year and everything looks square. So I mean, it's just, if they're all, you know, I can't guess it really for right now. This time of year is a great time for pilots to fly. Um, and so I think next month you'll see numbers are being completely different. Um, again, you can see down the difference in, uh, in the operations. The, um, this, this month, last month, we had the operations were down. And then, but yet jet multis were up a little bit. One of the things I added to the back, if you want to turn to the back page of page three, just for information purposes, um, out there, a couple of graphs that are out there available, what you'll see is the days of the week, the number of operations. Um, this past month, for some reason Tuesday was our day. Uh, but also one of the things that we've been recently tracking, uh, that I know Chris and I will be need to talk about in some others that, um, are Sunday hours. I've asked our guys to start tracking that again because the numbers are, are, it just, financially is not. We just need to look at the hours again and see if there's a reason to reduce some of our hours on Sunday. It just doesn't make sense in certain times. But that's part of the reason why I, I want to start providing some information on what our Sunday timeframes look like and, and usage and things of that nature on Sunday. Especially when it comes to fueling, because if there's somebody just out there doing touch and goes on Sunday, it doesn't do much for our guys to be staffed here. Especially with self-serve now gaining, I mean, our self-serve numbers are almost half. They're now on our, on our hundred low lead. Um, this past month, uh, we had, I think we were maybe less than 400 gallons separating our, our self-serve versus pull serve on the hundred little leg. Now jet, zero cells on jet. That's a different story, but, uh, we do have some jets come through on Sunday occasionally where they're taking somebody back home or something like that, but, um, those are usually done in the middle of the day. They're not usually somebody that's going to be here first thing Sunday morning.
The self-serve a little bit cheaper than full service.
Twenty cents cheap.
Twenty cents cheap.
Also you'll see, um, I put this in here just, just for fun too, the, the hours um, in there. So you can see the graph. So what you'll see eventually is probably I'll be breaking those hours down just for the Sunday. So you can see that our numbers really jump. You'll see right first thing in the morning because people getting out right at sunrise, getting out when it's nice and calm. The airplane's really acting, acts nice at that time of day and they can, they can almost be guaranteed if you can get your instructor to wake up and meet you out for a six o'clock flight, then they're great, or seven o'clock flight. Now, I know that a lot of the guys around here struggle with getting their instructors to be up before nine. So, but, um, they, they do because that's almost a guaranteed spot. Um, because of our, of our winds and things like that. The weather doesn't seem to roll through. At this time of year, especially we don't really have the ground fog and some different things that sometimes show up first thing in the morning. So they get an idea where it starts, starts slowing down, dropping off. So also you can, if we get noise complaints, we can, you can see that they're not nearly as extreme as night flights as people like to say they are, keeping them up at night. The, um, as, as standard, we put the list of different types of businesses that are utilizing the field. Um, one thing I wanted to note that will be part of the financial report as well is we're in, as, as stated before, we're switching over our tracking software or accounting. It's not really accounting software. It's really more of a tracking software for fuel and rent and things of that nature. And, um, this level doesn't quite, it's not keeping up with people that pay ahead on our hangers. And so we're working with the city treasurer and it's really not something that we need to track for our purposes, but for the, uh, uh, for audit purposes we do. So that's going to be something that's going to be put in at the end and adjusted at the end of the FY now. And so our numbers are going to look a little different during this transition time while we're on the reporting. Um, so the hanger numbers, some of the rent numbers will look a little different because sometimes they've had, where people have come in and, I mean, Vivian's literally had somebody walk in, lay in, uh, twelve months worth of cash on the table, paying for rent. Um, so that's some of that stuff won't be, that won't be taken into consideration into the deposits. And you won't see that on some of the, as a matter of fact, this last month's rent, uh, rent, you won't see, I think it says zero because she didn't put anything in there to get, till she could get it all straightened out and cleaned up.
Currently, when you report that to us, if somebody had handed you a year's worth of check, would that have shown up as rent in our monthly?
Uh, it, it just, depended on, it depended on who. Hmm. That was part of the issue. It depended on how, if it was a T-hanger, then no, it wasn't. But if it were like, uh, HEC or some of the other guys, yes, some of those would show up. They were reported differently. That's part of the reason why she was having such a hard time with, uh, because some of them were discounted, some of them weren't. Some of the ag rent was, the ag, the land leases were all paid at once. Uh, some were paid monthly. So it's, 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 it's once, it was all across the board and she, she was struggling with that concept.
So in the future, when somebody hands you a year's worth of rent, you'll show that a month at a time on each of our, yeah, that's, that's. Yes, that'd be the way we would do it in private industry.
Uh, going on down through on the, another fuel load of jet A was delivered. You'll see on our, another thing on our financial report, uh, but the numbers don't quite match up. We didn't pay sixty, pay sixty thousand dollars for that jet fuel. We, what it was was, we had a delivery of hundred low lead right at the end of September that rolled over and wasn't paid until October. So both months show, both payments showed up in the same month. So, um, ab gas truck was rebranded to Phillips. Finally, they were able to get the crew out to, to take our old truck that was ours individual and get that rebranded. It looks really nice. Looks, looks neat. Uh, you'll see it's a different color just because of the fact that, that that's what they, part of what they use to help with the, make sure you know which one's which. So there's no cross contamination. So they, even their logos are a different color on hundred low lead versus jet trucks.
That's a good idea. Yep.
Um, our ground capling, we're having issues with, which is pretty standard. When you have a self-serve system, got peoples that are twenty feet away and just turn loose the ground cable, that, then we get a versionist. And so they've obviously never been fly fishing before or anything like that. The, um, some typical little small minor things with some of the vehicles, um, one of the things we have done is, uh, we're going to repaint the, uh, fala. One, one guy said, even said, why are you going to spend more money to fix it than it's worth? Heard of it. But they gave us a quote anyway and yeah, it would, but you're not really going to find a car with that few miles, with that much room, you could put that many people in and not have to, and not be worried about it for the, uh, people that use it. The insurance is very low on it because of its age and things of that nature. So it's, I mean, it won't polish the drive tangy, yes. But, uh, we got everything from around two thousand dollars to five thousand dollars to get the thing done. Because we have some that want it. And we had one that said, no, I won't even touch it because of the rust. It's all.
Yeah.
Well, uh, we're hopefully we'll get that taken care of, um, not too distant future.
Take it down, amazing spill and get James a rattle can.
I thought about that. Trust me. That has come up. That has come up. I said, you know what? We got a fourth member that's, that can give us free paint.
I'll get you some.
It might be purple, but we'll see. Whatever, we messed up on some cans. We get multicolors down through the, um, airport road is, was mentioned in last month's report, which was not that, it was not a month ago, but it, uh, the airport road fence, we went ahead and repaired it. So we didn't have to delay on it. Still not sure. I know that, um, lease has been talked, uh, reached out to by the person, the person who tore it down. So that's still laying out there. We'll see how that comes about financially, but, but it has been repaired. So we, we don't have that big huge opening anymore. Um, our blue tractor, old blue is, uh, getting some needed repairs because we're getting ready for, that's the one that runs our snowplow. It tends to season, start getting ready for a snowplow. You start getting the stuff out for checking all the hoses, checking everything out. Cylinders and some other hoses have had to be fixed on a few things here and there. Um, some other things with the shop, getting ready for winter time, trying to bat down the hatches down there, found a leak that's going to have, had to be repaired in the restroom down there. T-hanger gate, had to reinforce it again. We've had people that have been on T-hanger gates that, yes, get their key instead of coming to us or they get here before us or something like that. Instead of going around, they, um, um, push their way through the gate with their body. Usually it's not like it's a car where somebody just rams it through, but they'll stretch the gate, move the gate, mess with it. So we've had to do some reinforcing down there to try to stop that.
Do we have a camera on that gate?
We do now. We did not before, but we do now. But, you know, a cam, camera only tells you what happened. It didn't, it didn't stop it.
Yeah, might tell you.
Who?
Yeah. But I, I said, if this doesn't work, then, uh, the old battery with the cattle, cattle, yes, you know, that little line through there. So if somebody grabs a hold of it, we'll see. I change my mind next time. Um, also you might've noticed on the, uh, we put up the NTSU signs that we attached that looks good, I think underneath the main sign out front. Then we also put one at the site itself, uh, next to the, a little, a little bit farther south of, of the, the old rental houses up there. So it shows where the actual location is up there. Yeah, I had the guys do a little extra on that underneath the maintenance because underneath the main sign, because it, it could be up there for a couple of years. Um, and then of course the standard winter cleanup, yes, or fall cleanup that goes around with landscaping. Around, I'm going to go.
On your, on your, uh, chart here, Paul, for the operations, uh, as for each day, what constitutes an operation here at our airport?
Uh, we have, uh, we have a sort of a parameter established and you can adjust it as you need to, but anything that, um, basically breaks 200 feet over the top of our runway is considered an operation. So we've got, so we've got some that, yes, if we have some that are practicing the VOR and are staying above, then they don't get counted. But to do it, activate them in there, I understand. That's the hard part because, I mean, even the touch and go is not considered an operation with FAA even, but, uh, they do. That's with our airspace. We had, can't remember what jet came in the other day. We had one where they had to go into, they had to hold. And we've also had those that end up having to do some extended patterns for jets to, because of the fact that somebody's out there doing the VOR practice approach. Luckily that, you know, those pilots were very understanding. They said, yeah, we were students at one point in time too. And it might've been 20 years ago, but they were students and they understood that that has to happen. But, they, they're over our, in our airspace. So anything that goes below 200 feet, four touches runway.
But, but not a touch and go.
Well, that's, we count it.
You count.
I count. Yes. On these operations, I do count. But it does, it's not, I mean, most of our touch and goes are by A1 aircraft. So it's not really a factor. It's just some discussion we can get into and with it, with airport layout plans. Um, so the diamonds are considered A1. So I don't really, they're just like, they're naff as far as that base is concerned. So they don't really care about them.
Well, as they're, as they're doing their missed approach, VOR approach, if they go below 200 feet, how does, does it count as a VOR usage? But it doesn't really help us in terms of the figures to the FAA.
What, that has been a big rub with FAA.
Right.
We had to go through a lot of that discussion earlier to keep our VOR.
Right.
Because of the fact that they said, well, your VOR is not used that much. And I said, it's only used, you know, a few dozen times a day.
Yeah.
And they said, no, it was, the issue is that none of the students and none of the instructors pilot because it has to clear the area. That way you don't get the three airplanes being able to shoot three different approaches at the same time running. It, it looks like a video game, but they're on our screen.
So you would have to put the, you had to file with Memphis then to do an approach here, a practice approach.
And that's when it counts. And so they don't do that because that way they can't just turn around and come right back.
And come back around. They have to get back in line.
Or they, or, you know, you can't be, have another guy shooting a GPS three six while they're doing a VOR one eight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With that nature.
Clearance. The, the other question was, um, do we, in terms of the snowplow, do we, uh, put a salient solution out in advance of an upcoming snowstorm?
I do on, um, people's surfaces, but not airplane surfaces.
And that's because of the corrosion downside. Okay.
Just a massive amount of whatever required. I mean, I just don't have that type of equipment because I'd have to have a T-DOT truck basically like.
Well, I thought they could kind of come down the highway and then loop over here.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
The city can't even get them to go down the city streets. I mean, they, T-DOT doesn't do that. They leave it up to the city to take care of it. So it's all up to our public works director and take care of even the streets.
Okay.
So that's, and ours is last on the list.
How, how much do you use that snowplow? I'm wondering.
How much have we?
Have you? Yeah.
Uh, we used it quite a bit one year compared to others. We were open. There were times we were open that Murphy'sburg and Smyrna were not. People came in here. Um, uh, we had a guy that was from New York that got on it and he didn't phase in one bit. So probably he had, didn't have his short sleeve shirt while he was up there, but he did, he did phase him out. He was getting on it. And, um, we, we hope this year that we, we jokingly say, if we're not prepared for it, then it's going to hit us hard. If we're prepared for it, then it's not. And so this past year, we were fully prepared for it and didn't really, I don't recall using it hardly at all last year. We used it very little, uh, just a few, few days last year. Um, but we even, we used the bucket on the tractor and we also use that blade.
Yeah, yeah. Ice is your bigger concern.
Yes. Um, but we are, I hope to, I, uh, had to pull my, I was looking for a new blade for one of our trucks and I had to give that up for our golf cart. And, uh, had to give two for one kind of deal to get a golf cart. And the blade was one of the ones to keep up. Hopefully next year I'll be replacing that blade because it's, it's seen us better days. It doesn't, it doesn't fit on our green tractor and the green tractor is one with cab. Blue doesn't have cabs. Okay. Uh, I know that you received in the agenda packet financial information from today. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it or if there's any questions. Alluded to some of it before. Um, just because of, you know, some of the income looks a little off this month, just mainly because there's nothing in there for rent, which kind of throws about, you know, close seventeen dollars, seventeen thousand dollars off about there on a strong spot, but, um,
I think what she gave you was the way, where you were at the end of the year and then kind of, uh, compiling of July, August and September, and then October's report.
Yeah. She gave you enough to really cross your eyes quite well.
Yeah.
If you read it all, you read it all, I will pat you on the back.
Hmm.
There any questions about that I can address, um, the, the numbers, for the most part, we're running, if you look at quarterly, we're running pretty good on the numbers. Um, of course with the, um, fuel cells are banking numbers and things like that are a little off. If you look percentage wise, things like that, that's, it's hard to kind of guess because of those credit card fees are in that bank charge. So every one of those is a little different because every car has got a different effect. Matter of fact, we just picked up a contract that we've got to get signed off on for our card. It's got the military that's four point two five percent. Luckily, luckily Smyrna's got the contracting. It's just unusual that somebody comes through, but we do want that in case they did.
But if you do get retail, fail there rather.
Right. The military just.
Yeah, right.
But I still fight with the city. City wants us to charge for the credit card. And so far I've been able to hold that off. We'll see if we can.
I'll let you know. We just started doing that. It was as of November one at our four FTO. So I haven't had any pushback on it so far. I think it's becoming commonplace out there. A lot of places.
More and more.
Yeah.
So that could be coming up in the next year's budget where we end up having to charge, charge a common fee across for each credit card transaction. I do know that, that does, it's, uh, is something definitely with discounts that I would like to find a way to remove. And I understand with gallon discounts, that's a different story because it's hard for somebody to carry around cash or a little write check for $1,200 on the spot if they need to, if you want to get a significant, uh, uh, jet purchase or something like that. And the reward points and different things. We're hoping that we will, once the sign is getting taken care of, that's been a delay. And once that's, then they'll have a, Phillips will come in and do an open house and try to push for their credit card, which has the real fees for us, which is great. But it's interesting in our last proposals, there were still some, there were some fuel companies that even charged for their own car. They had percentages even for their own car. Any, any other questions or any questions on the financials?
Okay. Do we need a motion to accept this report? So can, yeah, okay. We have that.
I have to make the motion to set the reports.
I have a second.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor? I agree. Passes the unions. Uh, no old business on today's agenda. So we go down to new business and the first one is the airport layout plan update.
Also, part of the reason why I was needing to send the agenda was because last month I was, I ended up not being fair enough to be able to give you what I, what I felt like was needed on this airport layout. And I think part of that was because of coming in on a few wheels for the meeting. Um, the, uh, other is that we've also, we've had a meeting since then and, um, there also needs to be a discussion in reference to time. I'm gonna let Matt kind of chime in a little bit, if you don't mind, a little bit on some of the things that we talked about.
Sure, absolutely.
And then we'll go over a few things on the airport layout plan, just for information purposes too.
Absolutely. So just kind of a status update of where things where this project's been hung up for a while. And the main issue falls back on this ALP forecasting and all going to FAA headquarters. We didn't anticipate that. Comes down to the number of operations we were forecasting because of the NTSU moving down here, put us over a hundred thousand operation threshold and that automatically kicked it to DC, which it got tangled up, up there. Lots of questions that we, we weren't anticipating and just being stuck there for a while.
I forgot to mention, I didn't introduce you properly. So you mind saying it for the recording?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, Matt Clarebaut with Garver, the airports consulting engineer. No problem. So, um, we've gotten word back from the FAA now. The forecasts have not been approved, but, um, essentially they, they recommend us proceed, proceeding at this point. So we're going to have to make some small changes to that and let that get finalized. But with the forecast being stuck where they were and the way the T-DOT provisions work for producing the ALP plan set, we could have gone forward and done alternates and, you know, additional parts of the ALP set, but they would not have paid us for it. And we didn't know how long things were going to be where they were. So we were just, it was kind of working at risk and, um, but with Paul, I have been able to kind of get some ideas down, uh, as you see on the drawing in front of you, you know, we'll, we'll refine this a little bit, um, it, it, a lot as we get in, as we get into the alternatives, uh, for the ALP sets. And we actually have a meeting tomorrow morning, uh, internally, Garver and Paul, you, you'd be with us for that, I think.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah. To go ahead and discuss, um, alternatives as we move forward and with alternatives, there's other drawings and part. And with alternatives, there's other drawings and part of the narrative report that will be included with this, so. Time wise, we, th- these are long drawn out projects. Um, I've, I forget, I think we had two years for the grant, um, due to the time we've, you know, from the time we put in to, to now and what we still have left. We're gonna go ahead and request, plan on requesting another year under that grant. It's not, no money, it's just additional time. Cause as this comes in, it'll go back to T-DOT for review. It'll go back to FAA for review.
Probably we're gonna go ahead and request maximum.
The maximum time?
Maximum time.
Would it, so they talked about a year? Two?
Whatever. We were gonna request whatever they, whatever they would do allow us to be the maximum. I think could, if it was initially a three year maximum, any grant fee is five years. So whether or not, so if they, if it was initially a two year, then we're gonna request three more, but if it's, um, just to make sure.
A brief, yeah, we briefly talked about that or I briefly talked about that with our planners and I.
We don't feel it's necessary, but we just, we wanted to go ahead and do it just because.
Yeah. But as, as opposed to getting to the point and having to go and ask for another year. Yeah. Just, just get it done. I, we don't want to drag it out any longer than we have to. It's, you know, it's sitting on our books and we want to get it done and have a product for you guys. Um,
Paul, if anything else, we wanted to touch on, on schedule wise with that or?
Um, we have yet to because of the forecasting. I know that we, we haven't gone over anything as far as what future plans are. These are just, like I said, these are just some stuff that Matt and I had sort of touched on. So if there are definitely some things that you see as a board that you think we need to address, or if somebody has said anything to you that we might need to, uh, put some more emphasis in, uh, some of the things I know it from past past times with, and it might be different now, but my past experience as planners, sometimes boards and or authorities and or even city councils didn't like to see land acquisitions and some of the other things like that on the, on, or they were, they wanted to limit some of the stuff that was shown on there because the one thing the city didn't like that much because they didn't want it, they were afraid they were committing somebody down the road to have to buy it or to, not just buy it, but I'm saying to build it. Uh, land acquisition, a lot of times they, they kind of stumbled on because they were, you know, it used to be the eminent domain kind of saying, which I think is pretty much done, it's pretty much done. No, but they don't really have that. But when you put out there land acquisition, somebody's gonna either raise the price or raise a stink saying, you're gonna come take my land. City's gonna come take my land. Um, really can't do that anymore, but they still, then people don't realize that. And they'll still, so that's, that's something that take consideration. Now, we have been able, you know, some of, so I know that in the past, when I did this airport layout plan, uh, Hank said, no, we can't put certain things on there as far as land acquisitions because of problems with the neighbors. Um, there's quite a bit of land acquisition that I want to put on there. As of trying to grab as much as possible, since there was a piece that I was going to put on there that they already bought, that I never thought that, I didn't think that was going to happen. I was looking, I was great. So now I'm going for some more. Um, but it does come into consideration that, you know, one particular one right here is this farm mainly because of this runway over here. That's MTSU. And so now are they gonna, you know, do you have to? Is there any politically sensitive or somebody complained saying, well, you're, you know, because of MTSU, you're taking my, you know, their point fingers here and there. Different things of that nature that you got to think about. Um, there's also, I've got one pretty, one, one city, um, official that's, he wants us to get every piece of property we can get to the, to the, towards town because of hopes at some point in time of, uh, not only noise abatement, but also because of, um, expansion, if we ever want to do a run extension.
Do you, have you talked to these people that, uh, you have, uh, Mark down here for land acquisition? Have you talked to the farmer?
We have in the past. It's been a while. She is, uh, the widow of a former employee. So she knows that that pretty much, I mean, we're kind of alluding to, it's almost like a life estate now. It's like whenever, you know, she's there and whenever her times, her time that she's decided that she can't live there anymore, then we would like to have first rights on it. Cause we're trying to keep it very casual right now and not trying to knock on her door and say, hey, we need to buy your.
Uh, well, I, I can appreciate that. It's not like you're storing poop in there. But, but she is aware that.
She knows that we're.
Yes, you're interested in it and there's no longer the imminent domain threat ever her head anymore. We, you know.
And that's, yeah, we've, we've never, that, that term, none of that's ever come up. We just, um, every time we get in there, cause she's, we talk to her regularly because of cutting trees or not cutting trees. She wants to keep a little buffer in there and some different things. So we, we communicate with her regularly.
Yeah.
Just to keep up good neighborly relations with her.
Good.
Um,
that, that will make a difference down the line. How old is she?
I've been told I'm never allowed to escalate that. I don't, I don't know. Um, I can only guess, but I'm not going to. Um, the, the, the property across the street, uh, across Airport Road, um, he wants the city to, he wants to see you buy it, Paul. He's got about three hundred and fifty acres there. He's negotiated with MTSU originally for fifty of those acres. He gave them that right to fifty of those to the north. Um, so I don't know if that'll still hang out there, but it could be that the city, I would like to see that in my opinion, to be maybe even the next industrial park over there. Because I, I don't, last thing I need to see is that to become a neighborhood and looking at it like what issues that Murfreesboro has and other neighbors have with houses developed next to the airport. Um, so I know that, um, as I've said before, it'd be great even to put storage units over there just because boxes don't complain. So if you know anything that we can warehouse, anything, but definitely manufacturing or something like low, light industrial is what's best around an airport. And so that would be ideal if, uh, MTSU were not to take, and they might take a big chunk of it for a campus and then the balance of it out for something else that's been great to have an aviation company come in there and we'll build parks for them or something like, I don't know. But I'm just saying that would just make sense to put something like that next to the airport. Uh, cause in the future plans, that road, Airport Road would have to be closed for that runway. So it would make sense to be able to, at that time, lay everything out for a new entrance for an industrial park or something like that, since ours is full.
It's just in that corner that come about closing the road.
You would bait, um, if you looked at the yellow up here in the corner, you'd kind of see where that road would turn.
Oh, okay.
Close right about there.
Okay.
And then we'll close and it would go down just past, um, there'd be a cul-de-sac um, down here, about where that other fence row is on Airport Road, just past the turn. There's two fence rows. There's a second one. There'd be, uh, right past that one house before you get to the empty lot. Um, put a cul-de-sac in there, large enough for a school bus or, or fire trucks to turn around. And I, that would all be shut down in between there.
Would we be better served? Do you think it's a good idea to start posing a tower to the FAA now?
Yes.
And put it on the, on it somewhere on their agenda. Okay.
It is.
I, I don't see one down.
It's been brought up verbally, but it has not been brought up, um, on paper.
And so does the fact.
Aware of it.
Okay. Well, okay. So they are aware of it, but it's just not on this ALP.
It's not on paper. No.
Okay.
It's, it's, there's, um, there's some discussion with, uh, MTSU now about potentially finding a way to, to work with, we, we have met and I have met with the guard in MTSU and, and trying to work with a way for the one oh seven to have a permanent home here on the field.
Ah, okay.
One oh seven, providing the manpower for the tower.
That'd be neat.
Um, and the potential for it, if we can make it happen with, with the tower being associated with the building at MTSU.
Correct.
Um, and we have asked um, chairman of their department, Mr. Pro, Dr. Preliss, and I've sort of looked at, um, hoping that they can still revitalize a, not only their air traffic control program, but the remote air traffic control tower, so that we can just put a mono pole with cameras out here behind our, basically behind our shop that would cover that, the whole area, because that's about midfield. Um, and then they, on there, they would host the cameras and the video in the, uh, you know, all the videos and host the, all the the things. And that way they get a feather in their cap. We get support. They're one of the main reasons for the support that's needed anyway. So it just seems like a win-win. But when you get win-win, sometimes that's, looks too much like common sense and that, you know, how that derails the federal government. So it, it, we'll see how that goes, but they, they're, they are aware. I have met with ATC. I've met with because that's, you know, going back to the forecasting that I alluded to, that's, that forecasting went higher than I've ever seen forecasting go. It went all the way to DC. And it's not usually the case, but because our numbers were so high, they're scared. Um, Memphis will say they don't have, they can't handle it. Nashville says they don't want it because they've just now, they're gonna be by the end, a class Bravo. So they don't want it. Well.
So if they don't want it, does that mean they don't have to take it?
No. But they don't want it. That's what I'm saying. They don't want it because they know they're gonna have their hands full with switching over to a Bravo.
Yeah.
Anyway, and Memphis says they can't handle, they can't have that number because it's thirty, you got thirty seconds on our runway if, if a number's match. So they say, they tell us we need a tower as well. So they're very familiar. They, they know that it's needed.
Who pays for the tower?
Good question. That's, that's where it comes down to. That's where you, that's where you stop. Is the payment. And that's the same thing we're struggling with, with guard to, um, because of the fact that they're, you know, do you pay them for, who's full time? How do you pay them full time? Does it come from, you know, have to go from one branch to another to get pay or how is that going to work? That's, that's where we seem to, that's where our struggle lies. I think the way the state is right now, the state would do their part. It's just whether or not that works with the contract that they have with the guard and how that payment comes about. That's some of the stuff that I think the guard itself is, is working, trying to work through and trying to figure out.
Okay. So they are working toward that then?
Trying to, we're trying to find that scenario. Uh, they, they still, they want a few more things to happen before we start from our side. And I said, because you know, once we start talking and MTSU starts talking to certain people that they need to, it will start at the top and work its way down. They want to make sure because of the fact that they're military, they need to make sure they can go from the bottom up.
That's it.
It doesn't work well when come from the, when somebody comes from over from the top and tries to force somebody in the military to do something.
Where are you gonna put the wind cone in the AWAS?
That's, uh, that's up for Neil to figure out.
Yeah.
Now, it's, Neil, Neil's the planner that works for her.
They're, they're citing requirements to all that. I mean, we have.
I'm sure they are. What's wrong with them where they are right now?
Well, the issue is ultimately, if you go with that, uh, parallel runway in there, you're getting into safety areas of the runway and that's gonna be.
With clearance on either side of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're citing criteria. That's, this, this drawing is very, uh, minimalized because that's why I also pulled this one out. So you can see the old drawing. Um, there is for an AOD, there's a lot of extra that's on there that's put into where you can see safety areas and you can see it's proper, proper depictions of, we can open it up and you can see why they have to have so many pages just to depict all the different surfaces that they gotta be concerned with.
Right. Wouldn't you think though, that you would locate the airport, the, the additional, the parallel, uh, strip here far enough away so that you wouldn't impinge on the safety, um, um.
The, the issue too becomes working within airport property and, and.
And so how far do we own?
So this, well, I, I'll say this right now, the, the runway, the separations right now are set at the minimum the, between, uh, runways, center line to center line.
With, with A, I'm sorry, with AWAS in between, uh, as well, or just the minimum distance from, from parallel runways?
So center line to center line of the runways is set at the minimum distance.
Yeah, AWAS will have to, that's going to require a whole new setup because that's the state's AWAS. That's not ours. And so we'll have to go through their citing criteria to make sure it happens. Uh, and where it can be relocated to again, it's been relocated once before from being right out here to over there to the other side of the field.
I'm not so concerned about the AWAS as I am the.
Windsock. You're gonna find, um, you know, it's gonna be something similar to, it could be some observing windsocks. There could be some other, there's other ways to give a wind indicator.
In this same location, which is pretty much where they are in all general aviation airports and the, almost in the center. So you can see it.
If you can get it, yeah. If we can get it and make it fit, then that's great.
And I honestly, I, I didn't look at the sighting criteria where these are right now. This is really just a conceptual, just something to think about, ideas to chew on. So I can look at that a little bit closer. It, it may, it may be able to stay in this area. So.
Well, that's another thing.
Requires.
As far as an update is concerned, because of the fact that with this forecasting of things, they, they are letting us or not letting us or, or told us to be a B two airport, which changes all the numbers and, and reduces some of the footprint. So some of this stuff that's so spread out is spread out because we meet C two standards. One thing we don't meet about C two standards is our traffic count. We don't have enough traffic count of C two aircraft, even though we have a couple based on the field, things of that nature. We have them come in regular. We have some D's coming in, but we just don't have enough yet. Uh, so one of my concerns is the fact that you build it B two and then, then turn around and we can open it up, show what you know, see. But when you do that, when you go to a B two, a lot of this stuff that's so big, it's a lot smaller and allows for citing criteria to be reduced and things of that nature. For all the fun lines that you see here on the drawing.
But the concern of that is that's not forward thinking.
Right.
Right. Clearly outgrow that.
Hate to give up that ground. You already have. Yeah.
Right. And I'm, I'm, I'm of that opinion.
Regarding the minimum distance between the proposed runway and the existing runway, at such time as we get a tower, this is a question rather than a statement. You, would you be able to still do simultaneous takeoff and landings? I don't think so like that.
What I'm, what I've asked for, for them to look at is basically a smaller, because it's gonna have to be constructed by, with state money.
Hmm.
Won't be constructed by federal money. It'll have to be state money. There's a smaller, basically a VFR runway just for
Okay.
To, to, to turn it over for MTSU. Not, it won't be just for them. It'll just be the fact that it'd be a smaller, shorter. Nobody really want to use it. The idea is to get them.
Touch and go.
Get them over there for their training purposes. And it's not really even for touch and goes. It's more for launching and, and recovery of aircraft. It's, they're trying to, trying to park an aircraft carrier over here is what I'm after.
Mm-hmm.
And get them out and get them off the main runway so that others that are, that, you know, if, if IFR training is necessary, they can still do it on the main runway, but also just so that they can launch and recover their aircraft. So they go out, train elsewhere like Murfreesboro. Do touch, didn't go to touch and goes in Murfreesboro instead of coming down here to do. And same thing, Lewisburg, Pulaski, Telemah, they launch to go away. Uh, the main, our base customers can launch from here and same thing for transits. But the tower will pull them in on the main runway. Those will be just for getting the little guys in and outs as quick as possible.
And MTSU is still talking long-term about building up in that northern corner of the airport. And that would be ideal for them having their ultimate big facility up there.
Mm-hmm.
And shorter taxi.
And they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to cross that main runway.
Exactly.
It's, it's similar. You can see some similarities to, um, Amy Riddle. Sort of the way Amy Riddle operates out of Daytona. They kind of got their areas, sort of their own area.
So you just have the one egress and ingress to this, um.
As of right now, because right now you've got, um, runway incursions that they're looking into, but that can be, they, that can be adjusted when you have a tower. According to that, now you don't have tower.
Therefore, the need for another tower.
When you get, when you get a tower out and about, then you can have some other you can build you another avenues to come across and that changes configurations considerably and helps for development purposes when you can actually have, have that tower. That's one of the things you mentioned is a tower. It didn't take long at all during our discussions over the years with the MTSU. Anytime somebody would bring up something and a lot of the concerns that were brought up, the answer to, to the majority of those concerns was a tower. Which I think is the same reason why Murfreesboro is trying to do the same thing now. Murphy's Birds is doing it about ten years too late to save.
Well, then that's what happened, right? I've seen schools as big as Murfreesboro, if not bigger, flight safety for one. And they tried to, they tried to run the operation with fifty aircraft without a tower. Didn't work very well. So they finally got a tower after a while and, and things really smoothed out. And then I've, and just not too far north of where I was in Pharaoh Beach, there was another school, fairly large school, uh, with a lot of training traffic, uh, uh, instructors and, and students. And it was deadly to go into that area. It was no tower. There was no control. It was all in uncontrolled airspace and you, you, you took your life in your hands. And from then on, I avoided it and banned it from my students going up and down because it was just, it was too uncontrolled. It's like driving through Paris. You know, if you've never been to Paris, it's like, it's crazy. And this is in the air. People coming from everywhere. So tower, obviously, I think you need. And this is in the air, people coming from everywhere, so tower, obviously, I think, you need that, that needs to be a consideration, uh, no doubt.
It is, um, now, of course, to have a a federal study done.
Yes.
Is this, is a separate study that I didn't wanna put, and I'm still hope, hold not hopes. Uh, that we can get that done through some of um. The uh, one of the. Turtles, if Congress ever passes a bill, um. There is supposedly some money that's been requested through that Scott Dejere's office for M T S U, you know, and one of the things on that list. Was a tower study. And so that's the idea is that, um, because the city is not up for. Um, their hopes are for us not to spend any of the city's grant money and or cities' funds to cover. Something that's being caused by M T S U. And so that's the idea would be that the M T S U would cover the cost of that study, that's the reason why it's not in the airport layout.
Mm hmm.
Same thing for that other runway as well. That'll have to be its own study as well, it is, and there'll have to be a lot more to it because especially when the fact that it's in M T S U's tenure plan for that.
Okay.
And so that 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 money will have to come from the state because F A A won't participate in that runway that small. Has to be a C two airport or C two runway for for them.
What's the minimum length for that?
Of course, C two's five thousand, yeah, minimum. But usually it's now it's around, um, most insurance companies prefer six. Six is the new five.
And thirty five hundred is the longest you can put, given the.
What we all.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they've, they've said thirty five to thirty eight, thirty eight's enough for them insurance wise, I asked them from their insurance perspective.
Yeah.
For that size airplane, what do you use your insurance company care about, and they said thirty eight's plenty.
Okay, I just wondered if maybe an extra displaced threshold or something.
For me, uh, for me, in my, based on what I've seen from M T S U and from their operations, the shorter the runway, the better because. They can't have more than one airplane at a time on a run.
Yeah.
And they don't need that longer one, if they need it and they go, they pass one of my taxiways, they're sitting there taxiing forever because they're gonna putt 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 along. And then finally get off the runway instead of, and nobody's gonna line up and wait, and so. Not, my people will, people based here, the corner guys will line up and wait and go, but. If you get three M T S U guys trying to do it together, they're gonna hold up and they're gonna clog the pattern, so I really. You know, if I get them on a twenty five hundred foot strip, I'd be better, but I know better, I know better than that. Know they won't do that, but that would be, that would be even better.
So keep it short, increase the frequency.
There you go.
Yep. Okay. Um. Any other questions or?
Uh, so the only thing that I've asked for for today would be for your blessing for a. A time extension on the contract with with the T doc and the C D. On the planning doc, um, planning airport layout plan. They'll have a number for you to give you an exact project number, but we do have, it's an open grant.
We have a member to make that motion?
Do you hear what he said? He wants a time extension. Or the contract uh, with the. Problem that we um, allow airports to follow a time extension for the uh. That's uh, for the approval and the uh. What do you do when you get a grant, for the grant?
Uh, okay, did we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, we're in all in favor?
Aye.
All those, no, yes.
Just to clarify, make sure I get the motion taken. You have to request the extension from the.
Grant. City will have to request from.
A letter requesting a next. We've done that on others, I just want to make sure that's right.
No money associated, but it's just.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is uh, land leases insurance clause.
Hey, uh, before Dr. Moore steps up, I have. Given you a one page piece, got a full lease if you wanna see it, but. Oh, I printed you out, page eleven, twelve together, that discusses. Specifically in the lease. Um, insurance. And uh, that just shows you the, what our current lease discusses about. The dollar amount of insurance. And then I'm gonna let, uh, just so that you have that while Dr. George presents his request to the. The authority.
Sure, when, when I went to get my insurance, and I'm not. I'm kind of naive about insurance, but they, it was two million for the hangar liability. The insurance companies call it premise uh, liability. And I'm not sure why, there there was a, actually a couple of insurance people that. I wanted to come today, but uh, I guess neither one of them could come, but that's neither here today. As a corporation, it's very easy to get two million. For some reason, the insurance companies do not wanna give an individual. For instance, I easily got one million, two million aggregate for, you know, just one year. Uh. Seven insurance companies declined to write it for an individual, and and just as an. And tell me if I'm wrong, Paul, but there's my hangar and there's four other hangars that are about to be built. Of those five, four are going to be. As individuals, uh, some of them are businesses, they wanna insure it as an individual. And um, let me just read uh. Okay, she searched premises liability of two million per occurrence. Uh, and was not able to get any of them to agree to it, A I G. National Union, Global American Alternative, I A T Harco. Store indemnity and liability and U S specialty. Now, uh, that's kind of where I am now. I don't know about. The other four coming, I think one was was the the uh. Light scope, I believe, and they were gonna do it as a corporation, but everybody else says.
Insurance is not, insurance is not a factor, but I do know that I was approached by the insurance agent of. Louise, because he is not putting this under his corporation, she is his corporate insurance advisor. And if you were to, as she stated, putting it, if she put it under his. Uh, his air conditioning company, then it wouldn't be a problem, but when he wants to do it individually separate. Um, she's struggling to find that kind of coverage as well, that's one of the ones that she referenced, uh, Dennis Young, that's.
And it has nothing, my financial, in my financial situation is good, I own my hangar, my airplane, my house. My condo, you know, I'm retired, but I said, can can I give you my, a financial statement? To to help, and they said, no, they don't want it. And somehow it's not in their business plan, because like Paul said, I can't believe this. Why, why don't they wanna give it to you and?
And and what was their answer to that?
They, that is not in their agenda, that is not. How they do business, and and this is multiple companies, let me just.
Are you saying that you, if you form a corporation, they'll give you the insurance, but as an individual, they won't?
That's the way they're presenting it, yes.
Well, I guess they would, I guess they would, but but let's, let's just, I was a, as a physician, I was a corp. Uh, and I had a partner, you know, it's not quite so simple whether you're a corp or not, it's also. If you've got a partner, you have other business interests, the, your your partners aren't gonna want to insure your hang. Right, and I I'm just guessing at that. Um, but, and if you look at my operation, and and I can't speak for everybody else. I'm basically just like a large hangar doing the same thing that the T hang saw. I'm not, I've got a little lawnmower, a power tow, but I don't have a tractor. Uh, pulling, you know, big motorized equipment. Uh, and. I'll be, I'll be willing to do anything I can to work.
What what are you asking us to do, I guess, is?
I get. The simple solution, if you guys are willing to do it, is to allow people that wanna. Uh, build hangars as individual, which eighty percent do. To let them have the one million, two million aggregate, if you're a corp. Uh, to require the two million.
So they they offered you two million, but sub limited to a million per occurrence, is that?
Correct, correct. Here's, yes, here is my policy, general.
Each occurrence, one million, general aggregate, two million, okay.
And that is just their standard.
It is.
Uh, stuff, and again, Wayne Hitchcock was, is Scott Butler's insurance. Aviation insurance guy and he, I talked to Wayne on the phone and he says he can't get. And, but by using an insurance broker. That shops around, we can look at a lot more insurance companies, and that's what we did. And this, this is, this is per letter, and I I can make copies of that with with all the people that turned it down.
So, reason why I asked him to come, because uh, it's not, that's, this agreement is with you for this particular lease. Whether or not, how you want to address as far as making that change, um.
Little bit of background, I I I hold an insurance license, I made my living in aviation risk management for many years, um. That's not uncommon, that's not unusual, and having two million dollar aggregate. They're almost always gonna sub limit an individual. Uh, especially if there isn't a business entity associated with it, I'm not surprised at that at all.
Do you have a concern with the ground leases? Is there a?
Uh, whether you have a concern with it or not.
That's not a word.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna find the coverage, the the companies listed on his list that he went to, I was gonna make sure that that he did go to all of them, and. Those are the major players um, in the industry.
Those are the only.
Yeah, that is a good point. There, uh, the only other option, and and that would be absolutely extreme, is is to go. Um, to Lloyd's and and find some reinsurer to. Parcel together parts of it, sometimes you can find several reinsurers and some will take. A portion of the liability and others will take another portion of the liability, and you can patch together. Uh, a combination of underwriters to to get to where you want. That seems absurd to me in this circumstance.
She found an agent that goes through Lloyd's.
Uh, yeah, right, and um, I'm I'm not surprised, even. Even on individuals for individual aircraft now, finding a million dollar smooth policy is next to impossible. They're they're sub limiting you to, on small aircraft, to million one hundred or million two fifty. Uh, and getting a million smooth is very difficult these days, so that that's a trend I've seen in the industry, I'm I'm not surprised he's in this situation.
You know what is your finding element between an individual? And an individual as a corporation, which would allow him to get more, what what difference does it make if I hold, if I'm a member of a corporation? Versus an individual?
So I I don't necessarily know that just because you went out and and incorporated or started an L L C or something. And they would come back and give you two million smooth, I. It it would depend if you had a business associated with that hangar. Uh, and and they saw you were engaged in aviation profession.
Right, I hate like a five million dollar corporation or something.
Right, uh, so to answer your question, I'm not sure it would make any difference.
I wonder if you, could you offer a medical flying service or something?
My my wife wouldn't like that.
Well, you wouldn't have to fly all the missions, but I mean, just to get it on paper and then go from there, I just, I've that. I agree, it didn't make any sense, yeah.
It it doesn't make any sense, I don't have.
But what he wants us to do is to allow him to come on with one, one five, is it?
One, one, individual, one, two, they would call it, one million, two million dollar.
It's two million dollar aggregate supplemented to a hundred, uh, to one million per occurrence, so. In essence, it's one million dollar policy.
So where did we come up with that as a minimum that we wanted?
That's a good question, I you you don't know the answer to it. Paul, do you remember the history of that?
Um, I think it's mainly because of the fact that the previous. Properties were all being done under corporations, uh, actually, Dr. George is the first individual. And so I think they were, they were just tacking it on to their, and nobody seemed to flinch because they were all corporate entities.
I think that was standard in the industry.
Yeah, and so the.
If, you're probably right, yeah.
So H E C, you know, that's large corporation with Titan, same, you know, that's. Uh, same thing for, uh, I mean, it's a holding company under this, did holds all that, same thing for. Um, Chauva Auto Sales, even though the lease was, you know, Gary's under his name, but he's, he's using his corporation as a, as the umbrella. So it's, they've always, he's the first individual that's built a hangar here, so it just didn't, it wasn't recognized because of that fact that they've not had issues.
So, qu- question for legal here, uh, in in. In order to avoid maybe changing the language. And setting a precedent for every single occurrence down the line, is it possible to grant exception per case? So perhaps the next person that comes through is able to get the two million smooth.
Well, the lease does say that if such such coverage is not available, they can uh, obtain substantially similar coverage.
With.
Through a commercial general liability policy.
So it could be, I guess, exact, so they basically just have to accept it here in the. Works in minutes attached to the lease works?
Uh, I think if that's, if you find that to be substantially similar coverage.
Who's liable if something happens and is more than what the insurance, if we allow them to come on at one, two, one point two? And the damage is three, who's liable for the additional?
Well, liability is, liability is liability, depends on whether your insurance covers it.
So it's.
Yeah, okay.
So there's a lot of language in that lease that lists that, you know, I'm ultimately responsible.
You're gonna be responsible, so are you willing to accept that?
Yes, yes.
So in my opinion, I'll use that million dollars to build the hangar back, because I want the hangar back instead of paying for the airplanes.
But, and if if you say everybody's gotta be a corp to do it. I mean, like I said, four of the five. That's not gonna, not gonna be happy with that.
But but as I read the last, as you pointed out, as I read the last sentence of this, uh, if we deem that this is substantially similar. Then a a motion and a vote, and that's all that's necessary, and it would not.
You're not, you're not amending the lease at that.
Right, and so the next person is still held to the same standard.
Yeah, it it appears to me that we clearly thought somebody might not be able to get the coverage.
Someone, yeah, yeah, okay.
So if you deem that substantially similar coverage.
Any thoughts? The alternative is. Pretty bleak, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the alternative could be.
Yeah, and and just, I was given that lease for four, but uh, again, I mean, I guess. It's really, I guess I should research that, but everybody seems.
Right, they are, I that's what um, the agent for Dewey's, and that's, um. She was kind of surprised.
You think that's gonna be the trend?
I I I agree.
You think?
I've seen it. Absolutely.
That's what's happening.
Individual is gonna be in the shop.
Okay.
But I do like the fact of them having to come before the word.
So that last sentence, as as it's been explained.
Substantially similar.
We deem that what he's been offering is substantially similar and vote thereof, and. That's all that's necessary.
But do we, do we have to go research what is, what what is out there that's substantially similar?
I think he has, so he submitted the.
Seven different ones that won't write him, I'll give him. Seven different ones that won't write him and I'll give him the same answer. I, I move that we make an exception in his case. And they'll allow him, it's some, it's substantially similar. I think that, uh, that, uh, he should be, he's made an effort that we required of him and it's not available apparently.
I have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposed. Motion passes.
I, I just want to say you guys are substantially easier to work with than Shelbyville Co.
Uh, thank you, I think.
Don't put that in the minutes.
All right, moving along. New business number three, Nashville Flight Training Lease slash Review Terms.
Okay, um, if you recall our last meeting, uh, it was asked that meet with, uh, um, Tennessee Flight Training to establish, or I should say, uh, it was, that's their, found out, that's their official name. They're doing business as.
Nashville Flight School is our LLC.
Yes.
Correct, correct.
So, um, doing business as Tennessee Flight Training. And so they, uh, you asked us to, to get together and discuss things and go over. Um, so I'll go over what we were be, we'll, I'll go over what we've talked about. We seem to, we, we seem to be on the same page. So hopefully this works to, to, and you guys agree with. Um, so what you have currently is just that's gonna lease. Um, we have, no, we didn't, I'm sorry. Um, I can get, I can.
No, that's all right.
We just had a chance to find this. What you've had before this particular area was a, a rate set every year. Uh, they went, it started, actually started off at zero and in a year five, it was two twenty-five. So they negotiated a way to help, I guess, get things started. I'm not sure exactly where that zero, all that was established before I ever got here. Um, in that term was also, uh, in that lease was for a couple of ramp spaces and, um, uh, fuel was included in that as well, not, not in that price, but I'm saying the fuel was brought in that, that, that the, the fuel will be at the, the regular price. It was, it was even in the lease. So, um, what I, what I have proposed and what Chris seems to have accepted is a per square foot price. That way, if we were to adjust to, and I get a blessing of, of a grant for upstairs and we're able to get that remodel to move them upstairs, we can, we can move those same per square foot prices upstairs and not have to renegotiate everything and things like that. And it could be based on how much square footage he needs to upstairs. He can choose to go smaller or bigger, whatever the scenario might be. Um, and I think some of other leases that he has in other places are per square foot price too. But it just seems to make sense. It seems like that's where we were headed on most everything else we were talking about, what we've been doing. Um, so came up to a per square foot price of a dollar and twenty-five cents a square foot. It's what we came to for our negotiations. It was sort of splitting the difference from where I was and where he was. Um, also we removed the ramp aspect of it and also removed the fuel. So if there is any contract fuel negotiations, that's completely separate. It's not associated with it. That way it can be up for negotiation anytime we need to, if things change. Um, and so that's, that's been completely removed from the terms. So it is set for another five year term. One of the things that he also agreed on, uh, and I, based on some discussion we had in Houston. This is one of the areas I was still, this is my thing, and I want to get your confirmation on it. I was, I was good with giving credit for his improvements over this full sixty months of the lease. Based on the current price he's got now, we, we would have to come up with the numbers exactly based on what the actual expenses are. But if you looked at what it would be, would basically give him a credit of eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents based on his current estimates per month credit. Um, so you're looking at with that, the square footage back there is two hundred and ninety-two point five square feet. So you're looking at a monthly, your, your monthly rate, um, is.
Two eighty.
Um.
Eight square feet, did you say it was?
Two ninety-two point five.
Yeah, so that's what, so the, the final price was three sixty-five, sixty-three. And then give him the credit. So he's at two eighty-two, thirty per month.
That giving in trade for spending one.
Five thousand dollars per month. I mean, five thousand dollars for improvements based on his current, current estimates, when I think some, I, I know at least.
Is the wall removal we're talking about?
This is the wall addition, the additions that were presented last time, last time, last month. The classroom space is the, the training space and, um.
Supposed to sleep and.
There's a perfect example of it happening, perfect example happening right now. So I understand these improvements because he's had chick rides in there today and um, their guys, some of them have come in here. He's, he struggled to get to his computer to do some office space work because they were in that whole room and you're in an oral. It's over now, but he, um.
Uh, they're, they're.
They're laughing, so I say it's pretty good. First one that got him, so there was a private here this morning and that was one of his students. They got, uh, his private check, uh, and it all went well. And then the second one was a multi.
Oh.
But it was with the same, same, um, same examiner, but a different, different instructor and different company, but they were nice enough to let Murphy's Aviation use their room because we had this one.
Is that the only term we need to talk about? Or is there something else? Only reason I'm saying is I've got to leave and if we need a vote.
But there's a, I mean, that's, that's, we're trying to keep it as simple as possible because we're, we've kept, uh, we've kept the Quonset Hudson for keeping, keep it, we want it just to, just for that, keep it simple just for that office space. And try not to muddy it with anything else. That's what we were hoping for.
Any discussion that anybody has any?
I don't think so. It seems pretty sweeted around enough.
Okay, uh, I move that we accept that, your recommendation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Passes? Uh, we'll burn through other businesses and announcements. So, Paul?
Of course, um, announcing again, just remember to be on your calendar for the Christmas brunch. Yeah, starting at nine o'clock on the thirteenth of December. And we'll have to go boxes if you're in a hurry.
Yeah.
Got it.
And, uh, we have a change to our December meeting.
Yes, as well. The December is just, that's, that's on there as a reminder. You guys already voted on that.
Right, right.
So that's a reminder and, um, add that up.
Okay, my favorite part. I determine this meeting is adjourned.
There we go.